Okay, good evening. We'll open the Shasberry School Board meeting for order at 6:30. We'll begin with citizens' comments. Nothing? Everybody's quiet tonight? Okay. All right, next then we'll go right into the presentation with Karen Burnell and Danielle.
Excuse me. I'm going to come over here so that we can... We'll wait to make sure everybody can get comfortable. You see?
Yep.
So first off, I'd like to thank you, Danielle and I would both like to thank you for inviting us to come and share with me about our program and some of the successes that we have achieved over the last many years. During tonight's presentation, you're going to learn more about our program. You're going to hear about what we call bright spots. And they'll be, those bright spots are going to be interspersed in our conversation. And we hope that we are responding to the multiple requests that we've heard from your fellow SVSU board members to demonstrate results in the work that we do. We look at results from several different viewpoints. We look at it from a program point of view, a staff point of view, leadership point of view, and a student point of view. So you're going to hear some of that in each of the pieces that we're going to present. We did make pictures, for those of you that like pictures, and we printed off big because we've heard at other meetings, "Can you make this bigger?" So I hope it's not too big. And I apologize for the committee, some of the handouts are smaller because we were trying to conserve on ink. And there are a few handouts people would like them. So I'm, Danielle and I are going to share the presentation, so I'll start off by setting the stage. So if you look at this Venn diagram, the bigger picture represents the entire program. And the sections, I'm just going to go through some of the sections to highlight some of the pieces around them. We're regulated by two different organizations. We're regulated by the Agency of Human Service and the Agency of Education. You might wonder why AHS or how AHS or the Agency of Human Services would regulate an education entity. We need a license to operate, so we have to present information to the Agency of Human Service because they're the licensing body. And we have to provide information to them about our facility, about our staff, about our curriculum, and many other things. Once they accept that information, they give us a license to operate as an early childhood program. And we have to do that annually. So every year, we have to submit documentation. In addition to the things that are obvious about the work that we do with children, there's other things that, I'll just give you some examples of the regulatory history. We have a 50-page regulatory booklet we have to follow from them. And in that is that all staff have to be certified in CPR and first aid. So that's different than would be in the education system. All of the staff employed in the program and all of the contractors employed in the program have to have a background check every year. So they go through that every year. They regulate how long a child can be on the bus. They regulate how many people have to be on the bus. So if there's, if there's six children on the bus, you need two adults. If there's 15 children on the bus, you need three adults. So they regulate those kinds of things. They also regulate things like the temperature of our classrooms, our hand washing procedures, the kind of cleaners we use, the adult-to-child ratio. They're involved in all components of our program. So we have to adhere to those regulations. We get visited at least annually by a licenser by the state who checks out our regulatory compliance. And I'm pleased to report that historically, we've always been in compliance. We look at that as a bright spot. Hard to keep track of 50 pages of regulations on a day-to-day basis, but we seem to be doing okay with it. AHS also leads the organization that does the quality rating system. You've heard me talk before about STARS. STARS is the quality rating system that we utilize for our public pre-K partners. It's a one-to-five rating scale. And it's quality above and beyond those regulatory requirements that I just referred to. So again, we have to provide documentation to the state that we're in compliance with this quality ratings system. And historically, we have been a five-star program. Another bright spot for us.
Is that there already?
As you go through into the next section, we serve, the program serves several different functions. You've heard the program called before, the Essential Early Education Program. Sometimes you hear it called Triple E. That's just the special ed portion of our program. So that's the early childhood special ed portion of the program. That is a state term. It's not our term. It's what every program in the state of Vermont does early child special education is called. We also provide the public pre-K program, both direct service and oversight for all of, or the agent for all of the school boards across the SVSU to make sure that happens and is in compliance with Act 62. We also provide services for children at risk. And the primary funding source for that is Title I dollars. We are required by law to do child finds, so we do developmental screenings every year and all year. We spurs them, we do them in the fall, we do them in the spring, and then we intersperse them about every six or eight weeks. And we screen about 150 to 200 children annually. That helps us know about their developmental level and if there's any children who might need special education or intervention before they come to school. And the last piece, or one of the last major functions, there's more than we, there's more functions than actually listed there. But the last major function is the CIS coordination. CIS is the Children's Integrated Services. It's the birth-through-three program. And each town, your town, every other town in the SVSU has a responsibility to assure that children between the ages of birth and three who have a disability receive appropriate services. And so the early childhood program is responsible not for doing the services, but for assuring that they're identified, evaluated, and that they're getting a program. So those are the major functions that we have in our program. The next piece is the locations in which we serve children. We have three school-based programs at Molly Stark School. And we have children receiving services in 20 other locations out within and beyond the SVSU catchment region. And that would be any of the children in the, in the area of early childhood special ed, public pre-K, or the children at risk. There's a total right now of 212 children receiving services, direct services from the program. And you see that in your packets every month. You will see the enrollment report. And if you look in the enrollment, the student enrollment report in your packet, you will see, I think when I looked it up, it said 210. We're actually at 212 because this changes daily. Children who turn three, who have received early intervention services through the CIS program, who may still need services, come into our program as they turn three. So it's always, it's always evolving and always, we're always adding. We wanted you to see some of the breakdown for Shasberry specifically. And you currently, we currently right now have 29 children that we're serving. And you can see the breakdown. Public pre-K is 24, three are children with disabilities, and the pre-K three-year-olds are two children at risk. And you can see the locations, and it's arranged in location by the number of children, so highest to lowest. So there's multiple locations that children are being served in.
And in some cases, children are, fall under multiple categories. So there could be a public pre-K child who's also a Triple E child. We're not counting them twice. So if you think the numbers might look a little bit different, they're just in a different category, that's all.
So if you're adding, so what you mean is if they're adding up the number by location, those may not add up to 29?
Thank you.
Is that correct?
Excuse me, Karen?
Yes?
What, what programs are, which of the, which of the groups on the left are at Molly Stark? I guess it's not public pre-K. The EEE?
The...
So the four Shasberry students who are at Molly Stark?
Those four students at Molly Stark could be public pre-K or EEE or both. So if you have a four-year-old...
Or this.
Or, excuse me, or the public, the three-year-old?
Yeah.
Yes. If you have a child with a disability who's four years old, they, for state purposes, they would come under the count of an EEE student or a student with a disability. But you get the same credit for them as though if they were a public pre-K student.
So I guess I'm not clear on that. There's, there's a public pre-K program. How is that at Molly Stark?
It's an inclusive program that would include children with disabilities, children at risk, and public pre-K, all in one classroom, just like your classrooms. You've got children, you know, who have multiple strengths and challenges in each classroom. Our classrooms are the same. So there's no, there's not a classroom that says, "Here's the pre-K. Here's children with disabilities. Here's the at-risk." They're all together. You would walk in and you would not know who was who.
Is that program run by the school or is it a private?
It's run by SVSU. It's all SVSU staff.
Okay.
In fact, one of the things, because I was a little nervous getting, getting going and me being nervous, I mean, that's really, you know, a disconnect.
Unusual, I would say.
It's a disconnect. But we have 30 staff members in our program that are paid for through the SVSU. And they have 524 years of experience, collective experience in the field of early childhood. And 90% of them have an associate's degree or greater. Obviously, teachers have to have a four-year degree or greater, but even our paraeducators. So it is one of our bright spots. All of those people either work at Molly Stark or out in those 20 locations that we talked about.
And Karen, to be clear about the oversight, you answered it, but to be clear, Danielle as coordinator and Karen as director oversight that program. They are the administrators of that program at Molly Stark.
Are you, do you have a question because are you questioning why there's four Shasberry kids at Molly Stark? David?
Um, yeah, it's not important.
Okay.
Let's go on.
So it's separate from Molly Stark Elementary School?
We just happen to be housed there.
Right.
With a enrollment of 212 currently and that fluctuates, and a staff of 30, that's a seven-to-one ratio. But how many are, I guess, administrators versus face-to-face with the student?
Yeah, good. So there's Danielle and I counted in that count, a secretary, a nurse, OT, two, occupational therapist, two, to speak, three...
A full-time occupational therapist for this program?
No.
Oh.
No.
Okay.
And 2.5 speech pathologist. So if you take those out, then you get into teachers, special educators, and...
The classroom contact is what I get that.
Yeah. So how do we pay for it? Here you go. The multiple funding streams. The, I can go quickly through if you'd like me to, although I'm worried that we're, we're taking way too much time with Fran only gave us about five more minutes. Fran, do I have liberties? Or do people have questions about this?
Real, real quick.
I think the one that I want to highlight the most is the VCPC portion of this. That really underestimates for us the generosity of the funders. VCPC stands for the Vermont Community Preschool Collaborative. And it really underestimates the generosity that the funders have given to us over the years. We've been able to get $440,000 from those funders to support public pre-K and SVSU over the last several years. And thanks to Rick and his guidance and insights, we've been successful. Some of our grant proposals went in and it made the funders gasp. They didn't believe that we were going to do what we said we were going to do. In fact, they came down to check on us and did a site visit.
They did?
And they were quite impressed. Now they call us the poster child of Vermont for public pre-K. Another bright spot for us. So federal dollars, state dollars, and then your local share. And we'd be glad to at the end answer more questions, but we better speed through because we really didn't start, Fran, until 7:35.
Yeah, that's why I'm giving you more time.
What?
That's why I'm giving you more time.
We'll be quick.
It's the one that's inside, yeah.
Up here?
Yeah, oh, up here. Not yet, though. I'll look at you.
All right. We have a speed talk, Danielle.
All right. So we went over the funding a little bit, and we went over the logistics of what the department looks like. But now, let's talk about what this means in day-to-day life. So this is our goal of what we do on a daily basis, is really to provide a level of, or actually to establish a collective community level of quality. So that all of the children, regardless of what program they are participating in, come to school ready to learn and at the same, with the same foundation. So that they're better prepared with the knowledge and skills necessary to meet the Common Core standards. Any questions on that? So how do we do this? And, you know, how do we establish this, you know, this level of quality? There's two different things that we began doing last year to just, to figure out what the impact is. So before we look at the graph, I want to just kind of look at those two pictures up, up on top. Those are two environmental rating scales. One is like what the STARS program, what Karen talked about, uses to establish that foundation level of quality. And then there's an additional tool called the ECHER-Z, which is the more colorful booklet on top there. And that looks at literacy, math, science, and diversity. So it looks at more, it connects a little bit better to the Common Core. Where the ECHERS are, which is the basic early childhood environmental rating scale, talks about what the learning environment looks like. You know, do they wash their hands? How do teachers or adults talk to children? What are the activities? What does the day look like? And how do the staff interact with the parents? So this, this graph highlights the six different programs, not including Molly Stark, that your Shasberry public pre-K children from last year attended. And those are the average scores using the tool that rates the program on a scale from one to seven. One being the lowest and needs improvement, seven being excellent. The green line is around a 4.4, which is the average of all public pre-K for SVSU. Your scores are the ones indicated by the bar graph. So that the children that are currently in kindergarten attended classrooms that were rated using the environmental rating scale that focused on literacy, math, science, and diversity. And the scores of those classrooms pretty much all fell above the average SVSU public pre-K scores. And those are not our school-based programs at Molly Stark. Those are the ones in the community. So the Bennington Early Childhood Center had Start. I think there was Happy Days. There were kids from Happy Days. There are kids from Little Peeps and I'm not sure what the other one, others were, but all within the community. If you take the, the tool and break it down by what it measures, which is the literacy, math, science, and diversity. And diversity talks about, it does talk about race and the acceptance of diversity in that way, but it also talks about individual learning needs. So the programs that we partner with are, have a lot of experience with learning environment and activities and interactions, and they've been rated on that because that's what STARS is rated on. And so they're very used to be having data collected in those areas. Where STARS doesn't collect data on is the, how we deal with individual learning needs. How do we modify and adapt curriculum to maybe children with special needs or children who learn a little bit differently? So that's where you see the diversity kind of slow down to more of an area that really we need to do more work in and we need to support and grow the programs in. It's just something new and it's just where we need to focus our work on so that the children entering into K are a little bit stronger in that area.
So I think that, you know, the important message is we're paying attention and we're looking at the quality. And we want to make sure the children are getting the intentional work that they need in order to make the progress. And this is some early data that we have to be able to track our interventions and our support, Danielle's support of the facilities to help them grow in the area. So it is something we're keeping track of. We're going to have to race through these, but you can do this, right?
Yeah. So how do we assess those individual children? We use an assessment system that is called Teaching Strategies Gold. And it has many different dimensions, but basically, it's observation-based, it's ongoing, it's embedded into the curriculum. TS Gold, or Teaching Strategies Gold, in no way is a curriculum. It is an assessment that is linked to the curriculum that is in place in the programs where the children are. So the assessment cycle, what, how teachers collect data, so they're not administering, you know, paper and pencil tests. They are collecting data through observation and the activities that they're doing. They look at that data, they analyze it, and then they respond to it, which means they may find that, you know, I haven't done or haven't collected enough information on one-to-one correspondence. So now I need to go back and do a little more data collection or do some more activities that focus on that particular skill. And they do that for all of the domains within the assessment cycle. So the way that they, the assessment cycle is based on, is based on these color bands. And the color bands are based on the age of children. So there's red, orange, yellow, green, blue, and purple. And it starts from birth and it goes actually all the way to the end of the kindergarten year, so the beginning of the first grade year. Typically, we see our kids fall in the green and blue color, color bands, the three to five age. And this is just what the tool looks like. There's areas, so this is an example, social-emotional. There's objectives. There's many different objectives within the domains. And then there's indicators, different levels. And you can see the color bands down below indicate the age in which the, the children fall into. And this is a, there's a paper-based copy of this, but we use the computerized version in all of our programs for all 212 children, whether they're in a community-based setting or a school-based setting.
So we sped through that, but I think you got the gist. We're not sitting down and testing children, we're watching them over time. And what we did is we just have a couple of slides that look at a three-year-old sample and a four-year-old sample. And what we decided to do is we chose a sample from the school-based programs at Molly Stark rather than the community-based, only because these are the employee, these are the people that you employ, who are running these programs and working with these children. So what you can see is the areas on the bottom that we look at across the assessment tool using the TS Gold. And you can look at, and you can see the fall data and you can see the spring data. And what we're seeing consistently, and this represents only about 50 children, we didn't want to, it would, the graph was, it would have been really cluttered if we had tried to do more, all 212. That is our, that is our intention to do that. But what you can see is that all of the children met their, met their goals. And this represents, when you look at the TS Gold, there's maturation. All of you who have children, you know, understand that children mature no matter what happens. This is beyond, this, this represents growth because of reaction to the high-quality opportunities that children are having. And the tool teases that out. This data is based on the system. It's not something that Danielle and I did on our own. It's, we input it into their system and they analyzed it. So the majority of our children, if, when we looked at them last spring, the majority of our children all met or exceeded the standards. There was a handful that did not. And they were children with significant circumstances around them, whether it be disability, medical issues, attendance issues. But everyone who showed up was on time and had quality opportunities, all made growth. So again, a bright spot. And you can see, we have a similar pattern with the four-year-olds. So if we, if we ask ourselves, are we doing what we need to be doing for children? Are the children meeting the expectations? Are they growing and learning because of the opportunities that we are providing for them? The data, the early data that we're getting is showing us that indeed, that is happening.
And how many students is on that?
That's 50.
That's 50?
That's just 50.
Okay.
And again, we just chose a group to show you a sample. But that is the kind of data that we can look at. Last spring, we looked at a larger number and the, the results are consistent with what we just showed you. If we want to take a look at what's on the horizon for us, and then we'll end, and we thank you so much for your attention to what we're trying to say to you. We have an increased number of children with complex disabilities. And those children, if we have the resources that we need for these kids, we're pretty well-positioned to serve them appropriately. And the reason why we're positioned that way is because we had an opportunity to participate in a year-long grant with the state of Vermont on working with children with autism. And we worked with the Howard Center who came down and did an analysis of our program and evaluated the program. And I have the report with me and I have the pre and the post. And it was pretty incredible. But what was more incredible for me as a director and a leader of a program is that their summary report. So if you can just entertain me for a minute to just read a couple of things. They did a, so again, they looked at where we were in the beginning, they worked with us, they looked where we were at the end, and this is what we wrote, they wrote. And this is again, the staff of the Howard Center from Burlington. And I'm just going to take out pieces. "We were really impressed by the commitment to students with ASD and the energy and effort team members devoted to being full and active participants throughout the project. It was apparent right from the start of the project how committed this team is to creating the best possible program for children with autism and how hard they are, and how hard they are willing to work in order to do that. The SVSU team did some great work redesigning their program to meet the needs of the children. During the site visit, because we were visited monthly and then we were visited, you know, pre-test and post-test, I was so impressed with the program changes in place for students with ASD. I think this program serves as a model for other SVS across the state." Bright spot. It's always good to hear some good news, you know? For us in the, in the work, I have some incredible people who work incredibly hard and are so committed to kids. We're so fortunate to have them on board. H270, the public pre-K bill, many of you have heard me talk about this a lot. Danielle and I are in close conversation with the legislators, we've testified, we've been asked for input. We continue that relationship. We're in close contact with AOE about it. It is in Senate appropriations, it's passed the House. So we'll see where it goes this year. It does have some... It does have some, add some quality and it adds some meat to the bill in a very positive way. And Danielle and I have been able to influence some of the things that we felt were vulnerable about the bill and it became part of the bill language, our input to it. The Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant, some of you have heard about that. Vermont was awarded $36.5 million recently. We're currently in the process, the state is currently in the process of doing an action plan. And we do hope and do expect that some of that money or the resources coming from that grant will filter down into Bennington. I did have an opportunity along with Donna McKenzie King to help write the portion on the pre-K to grade three curriculum, continuum. So we're able to really look at that. Because there's this whole theory that if you don't have a coordinated system of intervention for children between pre-K and grade three, that at grade three, the impact of what's been, all the good things that are happening in pre-K start dropping off. So we really want to look at that and build that continuum. And we're planning, we're hoping to be able to be a pilot, but that's still to be determined. So, sorry Fran.
No, that's fine.
Took longer than I should have.
No, that, you're allowed, I guess.
You're allowed, I guess. Any pressing questions? Larry?
Karen, on a long, a long-range basis, what does your resource picture look like? I mean, this sounds like a program that's got some legs, it's got the opportunity to go forward. Where are we gonna get the money to keep it going?
I know. It's a good, it's, where are we gonna get the money to keep it going? You know, maintaining is really important. I think that's why the budgets are, you know, the budget work that we presented to you in SVSU is a picture of what we needed. I think we demonstrated that we were willing to go back and look at things and really, you know, do some cuts, cutting back from our original requests. The VCPC money, I think is, I think we have one more year with them to garner a little bit more funds for Powell and Woodford. I don't look at them as a future resource for us. I think they've, you know, their, their role is really to get you up and running and get going. I think it comes back to the taxpayer. I think it comes back to us to be responsible, to be effective, to be, to be able to show results, to be able to talk about what we do, take it seriously, be willing to step back and say, this isn't working, we need to do it different. We constantly analyze what we're doing, the teachers constantly analyze what they're doing. That's why it's working right now. We want to keep that going, but you have to have resources to be able to do it. I don't know if I answered your question. I don't know, Rick has a suggestion on how to, how to keep it going, Rick?
You know, if you look at the pie chart, it's 50% is grant-funded. There's pressure on those grants every year. The cost of doing business isn't going down. And, you know, if you had it right, it's, it's, it's gonna be shifted to the, although depending what the state does with their, whatever it is, 270?
270.
Whatever that number is.
It's 270, yeah.
And how they choose to fund pre-K. It's, it's gonna be pressure on the local tax dollars for sure.
Just Karen and Rick, I guess, to clarify that. So the 50% of the pie graph is local, a little over 50%. That's all money that, this is SVSU-wide, you know, it's not just Shasbury. That flows into our budget from SVSU through an assessment?
Two sources. One is through an assessment. And the second is, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but your portion that you are supporting public pre-K is also in that number.
Right.
So.
That's, okay, in a separate line.
You see, you see that in your instructional section of your budget. You see the early childhood assessment from the SU and the special ed portion of your budget. Those two numbers, Shasbury's contribution to that local number.
And then do, since there are, thinking back to the 29 Shasbury students who are currently, as of today anyway, in the primary. Some of those are, are public pre-K and some are not. Are all 29 of them somehow counted in equalized pupil counts?
All of them.
They're all weighted somehow, so.
They're all in there. They're all part of the school census report, just as your kindergartners, first graders are. So you get benefit for them.
We talked, the last time I think you were here, Karen, about the impact on the tax rate. In Shasbury anyway, of the public pre-K portion. I don't know about the rest of it, but how it actually had a positive effect of lowering the tax rate to be involved with this program.
And that's, that has been consistent, correct, Rick?
Yeah, the, working on your budget, which we'll go into more detail tomorrow, your, in the, in the pre-K, or all these 29, however you wanna call them, has a significantly lower weight, first of all, in addition to the other weights for English and second language and poverty. They're only counted as .46, they get weighted down. So when you take that into account, it, it's a little over 11 equalized pupils for accounts. And the amount that it adds to, and those equate out to about, I think, $6,800 per equalized pupil that you're investing. So as I coined it with Karen earlier, or Jeff, or maybe both, I forget who I was talking to.
We're both there.
That, that was the smell test to me as far as the budget was concerned. Because when, you know, if you remember your budget, your, your students are at about $11,000, $12,000 per equalized pupil. If they're at about seven, as long as they're less than your average, that's helping your tax rate. That's, that's the basic analysis.
So to Larry's point, if, if we didn't have this, for whatever reason, Shasbury taxpayers would be paying a higher tax rate.
Right. Some of it you have to have. I mean, some of it you don't have a choice.
The disability.
But the 24 kids who are, and that's our choice.
That's your choice. Right.
Not only does it, not only does it make sense for the children who, for their educational experience so that when they come into school, their success rate is greater, but it also has the impact financially.
As the funding system is currently structured.
Right, right.
They don't change tomorrow or next week or next year.
There's some summit.
One other quick question, Karen, the bar graph that shows the six different locations? With the grade, the average scores. I just wasn't clear, were those scores of the settings, of the, of the schools not, they weren't a student score?
No, it was the settings, the quality of the settings.
Okay.
As, as measured on the Eckers E, which looked at the academic areas.
Are the ones that scored lower than average or lower than a standard, are they given tools to try and?
We have, not only do we provide Danielle's support, I develop an action plan. We've actually helped through grant money and through the money in our budget, we've helped enrich materials and supplies in some facilities so that they're able to do, able to meet the standards. So that is all part of the work we do. But helping with, you know, Danielle helping with professional demo, helping them understand, giving them the resources to be able to do it.
Okay. Yep, Larry? Yeah, of course. You know, Richard warned me, but I'm on a short leash tonight.
I'll stay here all night, you know, but.
Are you able to track, as kids move through this program, are you able to see the results on the other side? In a, in a real demonstrable way that, that this program is having an impact? It's making things better for kids?
We, over the last year or so, we worked on flag, let's see, what's the right word? Fields, I guess, in infinite channels. So that we can start sorting children who have had opportunities of public pre-K, who've been funded through VCPC and all of those different things. So now, all of these students are in that system. So our next task now is to start pulling them out after we have some data and we look and look at them over time. We have some trend data. And I use trend data because it's, it's data that's not meant to look at school readiness or student success, but it's information that helps us look at the bigger picture. And we have two pieces of trend data that are showing us that children are coming in better prepared by using that trend data, like screening results. That's not really an assessment tool, like the school would use something more standardized, but it does give us trend data. The questionnaires that kindergarten teachers fill out about children's readiness for school. That trend data is changing in a very positive direction. And it's interesting that the dial screening scores and the kindergarten readiness survey data is pretty closely aligned. So it makes me feel pretty confident that we're getting. But again, it's trend data, but it's important to watch student data as it, as well as this trend data that's going on as well.
So, so that'll be part of your, your responsibility too, is to watch that all the way through?
That's the plan, particularly up through that third grade level, which is the critical breaking point. And that's what I'm hoping this, the, the grant that is coming, that's part of the work that we want to do is the transformation of that age group. And we'll have, there's some, we, we went to Harvard and spent a week, we were invited to come. And we spent a week learning all about the system. And we hope that we'll get the resources through the grant to implement it. And they tell you you need a four-year window to be able to really follow it. But if we can do what they've done in this group called First Schools, it will be fabulous.
I also wanted to note that along with all of the expansion of the early ed programs that Karen and her staff also have been instrumental in strengthening transitions into kindergarten and working with kindergarten teachers, continue to work on that to keep that momentum of progress going and merge it right in and blend it well with the success of kindergarten. So that's important too. And eventually will serve as the basis or the link really between the pre-K and going through third grade under these grant opportunities. So we actually changed her job description to Director of Early Education Through Kindergarten, basically in order to make sure that we were building that transition.
Karen, can you assess the effect that poverty has on this program? Is it, are the numbers being driven by it or has no effect?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Say it a different way. What numbers are being driven by poverty?
The increase in numbers, are you seeing an increase in numbers of children that are taking advantage or need to take advantage of this program? And are those numbers driven by basically poverty that may exist within our communities?
We are keeping track of children eligible for free and reduced hot lunches. And it's not a statistic that I got, but we are keeping track of it.
Is that our only tool, Karen? Is that basically?
We do pay attention to that because what we, what we know is children living in poverty, we need to level their playing field. And so we want to give them the opportunities so that when they come into school, they have opportunities that the people who are not living in poverty have. So we do pay attention to that and we're... The data tracking is not as strong as some of the other data tracking, but we are paying attention to it. And it is three-quarters of the population that we're currently serving.
I'm sorry, it's three?
It's three-quarters.
Three-quarters of the population that we're serving would fall in that category.
Of free and reduced lunches.
Do you see that growing?
It's not, no, it stays about. It's, without remembering the exact number, my gut is telling me. It fluctuates by about five points, one way or the other. I haven't seen it, but, you know, we're in, we're in a changing economic time. And our free, as you know, our free and reduced lunches across all of the districts are growing because of the economy. So I imagine we're gonna see that change too.
And it mirrors what we're seeing in the SU, 75%, 68 to 75%.
Thank you. Anybody else? Tim?
Can you tell, tell me quickly what a day is like for a kid in this program, particularly the pre-K? What, what kind of activities teach them math and science and literacy at age three to four?
Danielle, you wanna take that one or you want me to?
I can take that one. Their learning starts the second they walk in the door. Through the teacher just modeling conversation and greeting them. But they're made, they may walk in, take off their coat, put up their backpack, and put it in the cubby that's labeled with their name. So they're learning to recognize their name and everybody else's name in the classroom. They may have to sign in where they practice writing their name or pick their name out of a selection of others. Set their place for a meal, like a breakfast. Hand washing, following routine. There's a circle time where they sing songs. We do a lot of singing, a lot of movement, may read a book.
They'll sing who's present and absent and counting how many children are there.
You know, they may have jobs, you know, that they have, like a line leader or a door holder. They do small group activities where the teacher may have a pre-planned activity that's a game that they play around maybe rhyming or...
Pattern.
Anything, anything. But that's where a lot of the instructional things happen in smaller groups or one-on-one. They also have a large amount of time, at least 16 minutes, depending on the length of their day, of choice time where they get to utilize different areas in the classroom, whether it be blocks, dramatic play, a computer, music and movement, cooking activities, manipulatives like puzzles or counting or Legos or things like that in our area. So there, it's pretty, they get to kind of maneuver through their environment on a, you know, one-on-one basis. They choose what they want to do. They go outside. It's a lot of very natural experiences that happen, very individualized, but very intentional. There's a lot of work that happens on the part of the teacher and being very purposeful and planning to meet the individual needs of each of the children.
And if your, if your question was specific to math and science, which I don't know if it is or not.
Not necessarily, I just, I don't know what goes on in some pre-Ks.
Well, I was just down in a classroom two days ago and they're studying rockets. And the students have built this house out of all kinds of materials. And they had to figure out the balance of it. It's this tall, it's made out of wooden pieces, glue gun, whatever. And they figured out a pulley system to be able to make the elevator go up. They had to figure out the ladder. And the incredible analytical skills that the group of kids had to, had to utilize to make that stand up. And also to be able to get those little trolls, those little Martians, up on that elevator up to the top floor is incredible. And you gotta see it in action. Can't ever, you know, it's really hard. Sometimes, I have a picture book actually of how you teach the standards in a preschool. And it actually goes through and shows pictures of what it looks like because it's hard to wrap your head around. But it's incredible to watch. We've had, we've had, last year, a teacher who is incredible with science. You know, the kids made a whole circuitry, electrical circuitry, don't get worried, they are preschoolers. But they made, they made a vehicle. And the clickers worked and the horn worked and, you know, it was all on a cardboard except for the, you know, the engine part. But it's, actually I have Fran and me doing some automotive stuff.
It's bodywork on that cardboard.
It's incredible, it's incredible what they do. And I think that it's, we believe in emergent curriculum, so it comes from the ideas of the students. And it takes the skill and gifts of the teacher to be able to take their interest and make it into an educational. And that's what they did with this Martian rocket ship kind of thing. It's, it's pretty amazing. But to see them in action, they are, the teachers never take breaks, the parents never take breaks. They are with the kids from the time they walk in the door to the... They are with the kids from the time they walk in the door to the time they leave. And even some of the people are riding the bus home with them.
How long a day is that for preschool?
They, the last bus cut, drops off the last parent at two o'clock, I think.
So, it's an eight to two day?
It's actually an eight, uh, eight to twelve-thirty day for one group. And then some children leave at one fifteen, so, um, yeah.
Just to segue into something I was gonna talk about in the Crystal's report is next week, the Shasberry pre-K students get a chance to come to Shasberry every Wednesday for the morning, where they'll spend time in the, um, in the art room, the P E and music. And they'll also toward the end of that, um, I think it's April when it ends, they'll have time to spend time with the kindergarten teachers, get to know their teachers for next year in, um, in the classrooms they'll be in. So, they'll get a, a good, probably six days here at Shasberry before they start, which is, which is a huge, huge step for them because it's very-
Great transition.
Yeah, it's, it's, if you watch a kindergarten come in the first day, they, when they've been to the school, if I've been there once or twice, it's, it's very nerve-wracking, so it's, it's, it's a lot of nerves the first day.
And it's important to recognize that Shasberry was the trendsetter with that type of comprehensive transition that other people now are starting to model because you've been so successful. It's true, so. Larry?
Last question, Larry.
Well, yeah, this is designed to be the last question, but trendsetter is a great word. Um, this is from the annual report of nineteen sixty-five. Were you even born on Karen?
I hate to say it, Larry was.
It says preschool and kindergarten education is a public school responsibility. Nineteen sixty-five, we think of this as being something new that we're, we're, you know, just getting to deal with it. Nineteen sixty-five, they, they made that statement. And so, we've been following that trend all of these years to this point of where we are now. And I don't think it's over.
It's not over. But what report was that?
Nineteen sixty-five, uh, the school report for Shasberry.
Interesting.
So, we've been thinking about this and doing something about it for a long time. And, and I suspect we'll, we're gonna continue.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Richard, get set up. Okay, next we'll look at the treasures report. You're gonna need a motion and a second.
I'm on motions.
Thank you Jen. Larry seconded it. Okay. Any questions?
Good question, more for the treasurer, I suppose, but then, hmm, school taxes. School taxes are on the income side of the treasures report this month. Uh, taxes that are, that aren't paid by the taxpayer? Do we eventually get the state to pay us for those? Are we on the hook for?
Um, my statute, the town, um, is a collector of the state property tax. I'm not gonna quote, but I'm gonna be close, paraphrase statute. Um, the town has to turn over all that they collected within ten days of collection. And then within a hundred and twenty days, they're required to give you everything that is owed. It is their responsibility to go get the collection. And they get to keep all any interests and stuff on the liquidity and all that stuff. But you are made whole within a hundred and twenty days of, uh, tax day.
Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of the treasures report? unanimous? Okay. Okay. Next is the legal fees for District One. And at our last meeting, we had an executive session, we did talk about the legal fees. And we agreed to bring it before the board to take a vote on this. Larry, you wanna just give a little background?
Yeah, all I'd like to do is, uh, just put forward a motion. I'll, I'll make the motion now if it can be seconded and we'll have discussion on it. I move that the district engage the services of Paul Gillies of Tarrant, Gillies, Merriman and Richardson, Emo Piller Law Firm, to advise and consult on a plan to separate Shasberry from the North Bennington School District.
I need a second.
And do we have an, uh, second?
Thank you. No discussion.
Do we have an amount in the legal fees?
Uh, we could put in a, uh, I suggest we put a cap in. Uh, the cap would be three thousand dollars. We wouldn't spend above that without reconsidering it.
Well, discussion, what services would we be asking the lawyers to do for the three thousand dollars? What specifically?
To lay out a plan, Pat, to, to look at where we are, to look at what our options are if we choose to go forward with this. Uh, this wouldn't obligate us to anything. It's just basically fact-finding. Uh, set the stage for some informational meetings to take place in the future and lay out a timeline that we could, uh, if we chose to go forward with it, that we could actually accomplish it.
Is the three thousand dollars, for lack of a better term, no, your thoughts? Or have you talked to Mr. Gillies a little bit and, like, you know, it's almost like you go to a lawyer and say, "Hey, I want a, a free consultation for a second. This is what I'm thinking of." And he may say, "Well, yeah, we can do that for thirty thousand dollars, or we can do that for three thousand dollars."
Right. We, uh, I asked Mr. Gillies, uh, what his, uh, assessment might be. And, uh, he felt it would be around twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, all right, that's fair. That's all I need to know. Yeah.
It's an hourly rate.
So, you did that. It's, uh, it's the obvious, but I just wanted to make sure.
And we just bumped it up to...
Anybody else?
If, Larry, or anybody else who knows the answer to this, uh, what, what would it take to separate District One from the North Bennington School District and put it in the Shasberry District? Who, who gets to make the decision? And I, I assume it's not us or we wouldn't have, we would have made that. Is it something that residents, you know, by, by vote, popular vote, could do? Residents of District One or the residents of the town of Shasberry as whole? Or do you, do, does anybody know the answer to that?
Yeah, I, I think I know the answer. Uh, the, the initial response to that, uh, was that it would have to be, because it was created by the legislature, it would have to be undone by the legislature. It would be called a charter change. And, uh, the change would actually occur to the North Bennington Charter. That, that, uh, the intent of which was to originally create this, um, this, uh, union, okay? Um, and so to undo it, it's, it's simply asking the legislature to change the charter. That, that's the, the initial option. There may be others, uh, but that's the one that, uh, that appeared to be the most. And it, and it won't be an easy task. Apparently, the legislature has a reluctance to undo what they've done once. So, the interesting thing that they had shared with you before Dave is the actual union appears never to have taken place. But because of the timeframe that's, that's elapsed since, since eighteen seventy, um, we have to accept that, um, that it is what it is.
It's a common law marriage.
It's funny you mention that, Pat, because I, I, I use the same analogy.
Did it?
And then I got it explained to me why it wasn't the same as-
Oh, okay, oh, okay, oh.
And, um, how was this initiated, this process, the beginning of this process? Is this something that you came up with? Is there community members approached you to say, "We, we want to pursue this"?
Yeah, we did.
Uh, there, there's quite a, uh, initial, um, interest in District One itself. Uh, obviously, they're, they have a lot to gain by it. I won't say the most to gain by it, but they have a lot to gain by it. And so, because of North Bennington's changes in going to a private or an independent school, they felt this would be an appropriate change as well.
So, did they come here, did they call you? Did they call Fran?
Yeah, they called, they, they, I've talked to individuals. Joyce Gary's been here to me quite a bit.
Yeah, some have talked.
There's some interest.
Some have talked to me, not here, not here, but if I'm in the store or the bank or whatever.
Same here. Not all positive.
No, no, it's not.
Not all positive.
It's not gonna be, and that's part of the process is to make sure everyone has an opportunity to, to have their say and to make their points, including North Bennington.
One, one concern that I have with it, and, you know, I'm, um, I, I think we should pursue it. We should continue the investigation and, and, and certainly getting a lawyer. I'm gonna vote for that. But if we had, I, I think there's a feeling, you know, that's why we're investigating. If we had it done tomorrow and District One was ours in September, what's the real impact on this school and the educational processes and functionality of the school with an additional thirty to forty children out of that district? I don't know that that's all positive. I, I just don't know for the, for the kids in Shasberry. I'm very, always have been very sensitive to, to adult, I won't even say teacher, but adult to student ratio. So, I consider parents as part of that and the librarian as part of that, you know? And to add forty additional children to this building, yeah, you might add, I, I don't know what it would mean. I don't know, I, I, my sense is it is increased classroom sizes. It's decreased classroom space. I could see the teacher's lounge becoming a, a classroom maybe as an example. Again, again. But, you know, I've, I've lived here a long time and I can remember going to this school when we had trailers. And they leaked.
Our tenants not to the back.
And you wore your galoshes in there and it wasn't the best learning environment.
I can remember forty-four.
And I'm a, I'm a result of that. I'm proof of that poor learning environment. But anyway.
No, I understand.
So, so I, so I wonder what, you know, you've got forty new, new students, uh, next week.
That'd be part of the process.
That would be up there.
It's part of the process. It's part of the process.
It's a discovery.
Yeah, okay.
It's to see the impact.
Yep, yep, that's all.
Project what that would be.
And, and sensitive to what's the impact to our, frankly, our friends and neighbors in North Bennington?
Yes, agreed.
Our friends and neighbors in North Bennington. I'm not, they're not my constituents, but what's the impact there?
That's, that's part of-
I lived in, I lived in District One.
Discovery too, is to hear their voice and, and, uh,
Yep.
discover if this is something we want to do as a community.
Yep.
It's been discussed almost from day one, uh, eighteen seventy-four.
Oh, yeah.
Many points where this has been a, a topic of discussion. It has never been, uh, something, everyone's always been comfortable.
Really? I know, it's a tough one.
And so, if you've been around, as I know you have, Pat, you've been, you've heard that conversation. And, uh, it, uh, this may be a stopping off point. We may get to a place where, no, this is where we're gonna leave it for now.
Yeah.
But at least we'll know how we got there.
Yep.
And, and where we were at that point.
That's why I'm all for it.
Yep.
That's why I'm all for it. So, don't, don't get me wrong.
Uh, go ahead.
My understanding is that this, if, if this were to happen, it would have a pretty significant impact on the, on the tax rate for District One residents and, and an impact, a positive impact on the Shasberry School District residence tax rate as well. Uh, which is, so I think it is something we should definitely be talking about and, and trying to get a better handle on. What, what is a little unclear to me is how having, having, paying a lawyer something, three thousand dollars to, to do something is going to further the conversation. Uh, so if ultimately we need to convince the legislature to take a vote, are we asking the lawyer to prepare a case to take before, uh, to take to Emo Piller? Or are we asking him to, uh, prepare information that will be used by members of the community to, uh, aid in the conversation? What's, what's the, I, I guess I'm not clear on what we want the lawyer to do exactly. What, what, what would be success from a lawyer, a liberalist?
Is to, is to inform us of what the steps would be up to that point, okay? And at some point, that argument has to be made to the legislature. Uh, it'll be multiple points, our own people, Alice, uh, the, the folks in North Bennington, their representatives will all have to chime in and talk to their, uh, their own peer group in, in the House and in the Senate to, uh, to get this passed, okay? Uh, Mr. Gillies' point would be to, uh, be the, be the gentleman who initiated that conversation amongst the legislators. To say, "This is, this is what Shasberry would like to have happen." This is why I think, he would be our lobbyist at that point, uh, and make our case. But we would have to come to the agreement that that's a case we wanted made and that's, that's a result that we were actually after. It's not a foregone conclusion date.
I guess, Larry, I'm just questioning how coming to that agreement is gonna be made easier by having him do something, by having the lawyer do something.
Well, I think having the information that he'll discover for us and, and laying out the plan and the steps uh, that we need to, to, number one, lawfully go forward. We, we don't want to assume we can do something and then find that, whoops, that, that won't work. Uh, to have it laid out, uh, by somebody that's, has the ability to do that for us. And when I said three thousand, that, that's the maximum. Dave, we may get into, you know, a couple hours and say, you know, this is, this is not something worth. That, that was a top, not the, not necessarily what we have to spend.
Also, Dave, I, I know Catherine gives Ray Mullin on North Bennington a heads up and plus Alice Miller also gets a head up, heads up. So, they know what we're talking about, what we're doing, just so you're, you're clear on it, so.
You did.
Yes.
Yeah. And is it just North Bennington and Shasberry that it would affect? Or, um, Bennet- the, anybody in the Bennington District?
It would, it would have to, if that's the path it takes, uh, it would have to affect Bennington as well, okay? Because Bennington, uh, uh, received, North Bennington School District was actually formed from two existing districts in Bennington, okay? And so, if you change the charter, uh, the, the connection to Bennington would also be changed, okay? And then they would be free or, or could do what they chose to do with the same relationship. We wouldn't be responsible for that. That would be their, uh, what they chose to do. They make a pact and, and reform a, a different relationship.
So, would they have to be modified as well in the process of doing it?
Well, I think that's what Paul would-
That's what Gillies is gonna tell us.
Paul would advise because, um, actually, um, what you have is you have the village of North Bennington is actually part of the municipality of Bennington itself. And so, I think there were districts ten and twenty-two that merged originally, um, out of Bennington school districts into that, uh, school district in North Bennington.
Do you think what?
Yeah, it was districts ten and twenty-two that merged. Um, but that's what he would, he would research as others already have, but he would confirm what those pathways or steps would have to be.
He, he may say, "You need a vote of the entire town of Shasberry, step one. You need a vote of the entire village of North Bennington." That's right, and that, but, but I'm just saying, but I'm, I'm just making it up. That's what Gillies is gonna tell us.
Right.
This is kind of the pathway. And here's the barriers and here's the defaults.
I just, I just think it's something we should pursue. Always been, we're obligated to the taxpayers of Shasberry, but we're mainly obligated to our kids. And, uh, I mean, if there's something where we can have more enhanced programs here or something, I'm all for that anyway. Uh, but it's, it's gonna help us in the future, I think, if indeed we can do this. Uh, we all know what's coming on with less money for grants, uh, less money everywhere. And if we can get a little bit more so we can do a little bit more for our kids, um, that's the goal for me.
I just want to ask Rick, if, Rick, have you looked at the, at the impact would have been this year if we'd had forty kids from North Bennington to Shasberry, uh, the tax rate?
Um, your chair asked me to do that analysis and I respectfully requested that I do it after I do your FY fifteen budget because I didn't want to have to, um, do that, do this. And then I knew the next question was gonna be, well, what does it really mean for fifteen if you did it all? So, um, yeah, I, once we get through the budget process, it won't be difficult to extrapolate that through. And part of that process, um, you know, Fran may have been the only one on the board the last time I did this, which kind of started this. Uh, it was a request of a resident in the town.
Two thousand nine.
And, and, and part of that process is, is Jeff and his special ad to look at these students to say, okay, yeah, you know, we're gonna need another teacher, we're gonna need two more parents, we're gonna need, you know? And that, you know, so that programming look obviously drives what the funding look looks like. And, and so, that'll all be part of that process.
We do know that District, I'm sorry to keep jumping in here, but we do know that the tax rate that, that District One residents are paying right now because they're part of North Bennington District is higher than our tax rate by, what was it this year? The school tax rate, yeah.
Significant.
Fifteen cents.
To me, it's significant.
Was it fifteen cents or?
Yeah, it could be, it's been as much as that. I don't know if it's exactly that this year, but it's been as much as that in the past.
So, the, the taxes, taxes for those people, for people living in District One would be a lot less than they are paying now if they were part of the Shasberry School District?
Presumably, as long as bringing those forty kids and doesn't create a significant amount of expenses.
Additional expenses, right. Additional expenses, right. And I know Jeff didn't answer that question, but if we're talking forty kids over fourteen classrooms, or there are roughly fourteen classrooms, that's three students per classroom on average. So it's not, careful.
But it doesn't always work that way.
Be careful of that.
I, I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we're not talking about trying to fit ten kids into each classroom. It's average.
Right, but there's, but, the, the, the good news is, and again, you have to, um, you know, you, you know, the analysis isn't, I mean, there's, it's a small enough population, it's a small enough thing. It's, it's not hard to look at, you know, I don't know what the number is. I gave you the numbers, forty-four, two, forty-one.
Forty-one.
I mean, we can literally look at each one of those forty-ones and say, okay, the needs of Johnny is this, so it's gonna be this, the needs of Susie, you know, it's, it's not like we're talking four million kids and we gotta figure out where they're going. Uh, we can do that analysis, you know, between Jeff, you know, our Sped Department, some of his staff here. We can figure that out fairly easily. And then all that just translates into cost, positively or negatively.
There was some groundwork done in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten on that very issue of capacity. So there is a, a starting point. I wanna come back to Patrick's, um, uh, comment about, um, impact on friends and neighbors' relationships. And I think that the important thing here is you're being very public, you're being transparent, you're using an independent counsel, uh, as long as you keep that trend, you know, whether I'm the conduit to the Prudential Committee, or whether one of you decides to become that, uh, whether it's your board chair, as long as you keep that conversation going, and as Larry mentioned in his presentation, uh, allowing that voice in forum or otherwise of North Bennington itself, as well as the, the District One. I think that's what you wanna, uh, be mindful of and continue to monitor yourselves on, and make sure that you're being transparent, open, inviting wide, uh, uh, community input, both from North Bennington, keep the communications going with that board, um, it's very, very important.
Just wanna add one other thing that came out of the discussion, the original discussion that goes to Dave's question. There may be legal ramifications that, that, I won't say for Shasberry to look at this, but we are obligated to the children of Shasberry, okay?
We use a board?
Well, yeah, we is the elected board. And, uh, the question that's circulating also in my field is, are we meeting that, sending our children to a private school, okay? That we cannot control what happens within the boundaries of that private school? So that's part of the conversation as well. This is a hot topic, uh, upstate, not so much that it involves us, but that relationship of public dollars is what privates children.
Can I just, just as a follow-up, uh, I just wanna question that. Are, are we as a, as a board responsible for the addition of children who are not in this school district? And I, I, philosophically, maybe, but legally, are we?
No, so right now, District One, technically, we're not responsible for it, under the car law.
Part of what we needed, a definite answer on that, is just where our, our legal responsibility is at.
Then maybe I'm wrong, that's what we're asking for. Could, that assumption could be wrong, what I just made.
And I just wanna, um, bring it up again, that was mentioned at the last board meeting. If those forty students wanna be at Shasberry, they would be here, because now they have school choice. So, and we only have one student that's enrolled from North Shasberry, so.
And, and I respect the fact that you're looking at that from the student's point of view, but there's more students involved, there, there, there's the entire community of Shasberry itself, and there's also the, the community within District One, that has to have a, a voice in that decision as well, so. And, and I think it's proper to give them that opportunity. They, they very well may come in and say, hey, we're, we're happy with the way things are, and, and we need to hear that and act accordingly.
And in the meantime, um, Jeff can keep, uh, data about inquiries, um, which you can go backwards to last year for incoming to this year, because if you remember, you actually put limitations on grade levels and capacities. So if he keeps the data from year to year as you're moving forward through this process, you'll know how many, uh, had asked for admittance but could not because of capacity issues currently, and how many were admitted, just, I think it's data to keep.
Currently, how many are admitted?
One.
Currently, have there been any requests that have been denied because of capacity constraints?
Two.
And that's within a specific grade, just, that's a capacity issue?
Yes.
And we'll be closed discussion.
Thank you.
That's a second.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, let's, let's take a vote on the.
Would you like me to, to send the motion with the cap on?
A men, a men's motion, yeah, with the dollar.
Yeah.
Like to amend the original motion to include a, a three thousand dollar cap on, on the expenditure in this area.
Yeah, and a second? Hold on just a second. Okay, good. All right, so we're, we're ready, yeah, are we ready to vote now? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
For three thousand dollars for Paul Gillies.
There you go, unanimous.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, next up, the consent agenda. We have minutes, we have the warrants, and then we also have one retirement. Anything on the minutes?
So on the first page, line forty-eight, you repeated that, that.
What's wrong with that, that, this?
Caught my eye.
Anything else, Jeff?
I think you planted them in there for me.
He wants to make sure we read them.
I know.
Okay, hearing none on that, you all set in the minutes?
Can I just say one thing about Mrs. Paul retiring?
Yeah.
That she, um, did a wonderful job for years here.
She has.
And I appreciate it.
Thirty-two years.
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll do the warrants, unless anybody's got anything else. Uh, we have warrant number ten, one thousand twelve, it's in the amount of fifty thousand, seven eighty-one, sixty-seven. Number one thousand thirteen, six hundred, sixty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-three, sixteen. Warrant number two thousand six, three hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy-one, forty-nine. Any question on those?
Question on two thousand one, two thousand six?
Six? Yeah.
Rick, it's just a general question, under the, uh, S V S U category on page three. The assessment, uh, that, that special ed, with everything, with everything, it's, it's, um. No, the individual one, there's, there's one assessment for elementary resource room.
Yeah, that's special ed.
That's special ed.
Yeah.
And the assessment for consulting.
That's, uh, the old plus, which is now on point.
Right, that's on point, right. The early childhood program.
You just listened to it.
And the, uh, E L L services, that's.
English language learning.
Thank you. Dave, anybody?
Uh, on the last page, so again, number two thousand six on page four, just looking at the, at the T M invoice, it reminds me of the conversation we had last month about, um, trash removal. So, uh, Jeff, do we, well, first of all, are, are we under a, a union-wide contract with, with Hallard? So this is our own independent decision?
Yes.
And this include, does this include the cost for taking away organic material that's gonna be destined for the compost?
Yes.
Now, are they also taking, because this came up, this is, my real question is, because this came up last month, are they taking food waste from the kitchen area and composting it, as opposed to landfilling it?
Yes. They're, they're too, they're too large to care, they say, yeah.
All right, now, Larry.
Fran, I have a question going back to last week to Mr. Pollock, or last meeting with Mr. Pollock.
Yes.
Were you able to make contact with him, I know you.
That's in my report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Except for Pat, okay.
Abstain.
Abstention, I realize why you abstained.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I think it's here then. Uh, we have policies, there, which are none. So we'll go down to facilities, Jeff.
Just before holiday break, our classroom radios arrived. Jay, Coonrad, and Colleen Mieres and myself, and we're playing with them the last couple days to get, uh, get them up and running, get used to them, and we are creating some protocols and procedures of how we're gonna use them in the classrooms. And we will be, uh, training the teachers on those later this week, on how they're gonna, how they're gonna be used in the classroom and throughout the whole building. Actually, they're pretty nice. I think it's gonna be a nice way to use communication in the school, uh, much more inexpensive than doing phone lines, as we talked about, and, uh, and a much safer way than using the intercom system during an emergency situation. The kitchen, sorry.
Will these radios find non-emergency uses in the school like to do?
Yes, yep, there's multiple channels that we can use. And what we're thinking about is having one channel dedicated for emergency use only, which the classrooms will be on all the time. And then there'll be a second channel that myself and Jay will have on at all times. And Colleen will have both channels in the office, so she can hear both students in contact wherever she needs to. And we can switch from channel to channel on our radios depending on what we need.
So Colleen needs to get a message to a teacher about a student riding the bus or something?
That won't be used for that, no.
No?
The intercom system will continue to be used for that, because we don't wanna send out a message saying so-and-so is being sent to, being sent home on the bus to the whole school. So the intercom system can still be used for that, but during an emergency situation, so a teacher doesn't need to go to the front of the room and use the intercom in front of the doorway, they can, they can use the radio if they need to contact us. We can also send a tone out to all the radios for a, for example, for a lockdown. Instead of myself going over the loudspeaker and saying, school's now on lockdown, we can send a tone on the radios. All the teachers can hear that tone, they know what that tone means. They do the proper procedure as far as protecting the students, locking their doors, putting the proper, um, shades up and everything, and they know it's a lockdown situation.
So what, what is an example of a non-emergency use you could?
We're gonna have, uh, we have enough radios, about twenty-five radios. There are currently, I think, eighteen we need for classrooms, between sped and regular classrooms and, and specials. So we're gonna have a set for, for example, for recess duty. So a teacher can take, a teacher can come and grab a set from the office for recess duty, so if there's something happening at recess, that teacher can call the office, say, I need a nurse, or I need Mr. Johnson, or I need whatever. So we can use that separate channel for that, for just recess. Um, Jay and I can have the, have that radio ourselves on set on another station. Colleen can call us if we're somewhere else in the building, without the whole school hearing and saying, Mr. Johnson, can you come to the office, or Mr. Jay, we have a problem with so-and-so's room, so.
Will the kitchen have a, a radio?
Yeah, I think so.
For an emergency?
Yeah, I mean, they have a phone right now. Oh, they don't, sorry, they have a direct, they have a line from our office. But, um, but we may have enough for the, for the kitchen and everyone else.
So if you needed to do an emergency lockdown?
Yeah. Yeah, we'd have to have everybody to have a radio for that, yes.
Will you be drilling for that, emergency lockdown?
Yeah, we have to, by state law, we have to alternate between a fire drill and a lockdown drill every other month. So I think actually this lockdown drill, so we can, we can drill with that, we can drill with that a few times, yeah. So the teachers and the students get used to that.
And one more silly question, will you be using radio protocol, like, over and out?
God, no.
Or your buddy?
God, no.
Ten eight, ten seventy-six.
Breaker one nine.
Remember.
No.
This is big dog.
Yeah, all right.
On another note.
Speaking of roadkill.
Uh, the kitchen, we've had some issues with the kitchen freezer. The, uh, the motor had some issues, uh, earlier last month. And thanks to Colleen McHale who came in and did a repair on the motor, they had to have some insulation, some piping, and we, we have a bill that we, uh, we weren't expecting in the kitchen repairs that we needed, I was hoping to, or I, I am gonna ask for a, a transfer of funds. Thanks to Jay doing the plowing, we have a, a thousand dollars in the plowing, uh, fund line. So if we could transfer funds from that, that one thousand dollars from the snow plowing to kitchen repairs, we could cover the cost of, uh, the kitchen freezer being repaired. Um, also note that over break, another problem with kitchen freezer, there's a control, some kind of control on the outside where the weather gets so cold that it shuts down the freezer, so the freezer doesn't get over cold. That control happened, because it was so cold over break, but didn't click at that guy. So the freezer was off for, for some time.
Lost food.
We lost some food, we had to have Ben and Cooley come in, obviously, and change that control so that it worked. So we, we will be needing to transfer some more funds once we get that, um, that invoice from them.
You need action tonight on that?
Yeah, I need action tonight, so we can, we can just send out, what, February one. So it's transferring funds from the snow plowing account line to kitchen repairs line.
And what's the total cost for the repair?
The total cost for the repair, it's right on there, behind that one, um, Fran. It brings one thousand and change, and there's a little bit.
Thousand fifty-three.
There's a little bit of money in that line already, so the one thousand from the snow plowing will cover that.
And is that a new freezer?
It's fairly new, we got it from Paddle three years ago, from understanding it.
But it wasn't new from Paddle.
No, 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 no.
I don't think it was, I don't think it was truly old either.
The, the freezer itself is very old. The compressors, were three-year-old compressors that we got from Paddle.
So you have three-year-old compressors?
To begin with.
Yeah.
Do we, I was gonna ask, do we have a maintenance agreement with Ben and Cooley to come in and every few months?
I think, uh, I talked with Irene about that, and why, why we use them, and, um, they were the ones installed compressors when we got them, so they're familiar with it, that's why she uses them. We don't have, as far as I know, she doesn't have a, a agreement with them, just coming to check it every periodically.
In my, in my experience, having, you're supposed to have it looked at every three to four months, and sometimes all they're doing is cleaning it, sometimes they're recharging as it should, but, uh, it might be something to.
We talked more about it.
So, motion, or, okay, yeah, just, go ahead, Dave, read them all, you've got it right in front of you.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve a formal transfer of funds, uh, in the amount of a thousand dollars from account number.
Just put from the plow account.
Snow plowing to account number kitchen repairs. Cover the cost of repairs made to the kitchen freezer.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Second.
Thank you, that's Jen's second.
Discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I wanna, I have to remain consistent, I don't think it's appropriate to, uh, transfer the funds from, from the accounts. Um, I realize that there's a budgeted amount, then there's the adjusted budget, which is where this transfer will hit, but it's just, in my opinion, not good accounting, not good, uh, not good management. Um, I'd rather see at the end of this year that my original budgeted amount for, uh, the kitchen maintenance repairs was zero, or whatever that budget was, and that we overspent that line because we have a freezer that's very, very old, and because we have compressors that are three years old. And it may raise further questions later on of replacement and that kind of stuff, so. It's just how I feel.
Methodologies of, um, recording.
But don't we actually still have the original budget that we can look at? I mean, I, I agree with you that we would wanna be able to see that.
Yep.
We didn't fund that as much as we ended up needing to fund it.
Yep.
But don't, don't we in fact have that still available to us?
Okay, we'll take, take a vote on this, uh, everybody in favor? Four, four, one abstention.
No, this is a nay.
No.
This is a nay.
Okay.
Nay.
Nay not to repair it, or?
Nay not to transfer the money. Nay not to transfer the money, yeah.
I hope you don't vote not to repair it, it's already been done.
I mean, sorry, I have a procedural question. Can we spend the money without transferring it?
Yeah, I mean, it was.
We could, I mean, we can spend the money out of that account without putting money into the account.
We talked about this numerous times.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd like to add one more thing on facilities. Um, some of the parents will notice, and some of the community members will notice, we changed, we did little changes to our, our driveway with the traffic flow. There have been some concerns during, especially during pickup time, with the buses picking up students and parents picking up students, um, close to the same time. I personally had some concerns, as I'm on bus duty most afternoons, with, with some teachers, with kids, you know, going across the parking lot, in between buses, in between cars, getting to their moms or dads. Um, buses picking up kids, coming in and out at different times, the buses aren't always here at exactly three oh, three-ten when the bus bell rings, or three oh-five when the bus bell rings. So we, uh, we're trying to create with the cones and a flyer we sent home to parents, a little more streamlined effect there, and a little more safe area for the students, where we create the inside lane for just buses, the outside lane for just cars. And that, we try to get the parents to not park in front of the building, especially at the end of the day, so the buses can freely come in, pick up the students, and freely go out. And also hoping the parents, we put this on the, um, on the flyer, uh, when a bus is parked, picking up students, and not so much the case for the students being picked up, because that's the law when, when the bus is on the road, you have to be careful of students being picked up, that you have to stop for a bus. But this is more for us, the kids that are leaving to go across the parking lot with their parents. Uh, we want them to stop and wait for the bus to leave before the cars proceed, so that nothing, no, no students or parents come from between a bus or behind a bus, and a car leaving, and you really can't see what's, what's happening. And the kids that are coming out of the school on the bus, there's really no danger, then there's a five foot between the wall and the bus that they don't have to worry about, so we're, we're working on it, I know we have to tweak a little bit, but we're trying to make it a little safer for the students and the parents during that time.
Jeff, do you think that'll still be clear enough, that parents can't go by the bus, that that must have stopped?
We, we, it's funny you ask that, Larry, because we, we've talked to the Rock City Police, we talked to Vainton PD, and we talked to somebody up in Montpelier, um, pointing to them, if the bus is not on a state highway or a state road or a road. It lights flash, it lights flash, but on the road, parent, cars can.
Really?
Yeah, if you, but if we, one thing we thought about, but if we put somebody out there with a stop sign, and we say, "In the parking lot, you need to stop, and you can't go until the buses have left," by law, they have to obey that stop sign and that person that's out there, which we've thought about putting someone out there for that. Um, it's gotten a little better, I will say it's gotten a little better, the parking's a little better, there's still some parents that park in front of the building at the end of the day, and there's still some parents that, um, are, but we're working on it, and we're, we're trying to be proactive.
So is there a long time, long-term goal when you have to repave that parking lot to make it more defined, and you have, like a curve maybe in between or something?
Curve or more, more lines, more definite lines, and, and even putting bus lane, hard lane.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we thought about, Jay and I talked about that when we did the review.
You're still up?
I'm still up.
If you're Green Mountain Star Plan.
Still got my water in me. Um, Green Mountain Star Plan, we have finished our plan, Catherine has, um, reviewed it, we've got a peer review from, um, somebody else in the state, another principal in the state. We have submitted it to the state for their review. We, uh, have three main goals in the plan. They are, one, since our A Y P was not met in mathematics, we really had to follow the plan around mathematics, so our, our, obviously, one of our major goals is to increase student achievement in that area. Although it's gonna look at all areas when we do this, do this plan the way it turned out, it's not gonna be just mathematics. We're gonna, uh, collect data, analyze, analyze that data, use it to track students from the start of the school year till whenever they leave the school, uh, using different kind of progress monitoring tools like A Anges Web and map testing, which, um, some of you are familiar with. We're gonna adopt an R I T, or, I'm sorry, N T S S, R, R I T model, which is multi-tiered system supports, which is a new model of making our, using our resources a little more efficiently than maybe we have in the past, and giving the students the interventions and something that's in which they need, so they can reach the goals that we set for them. And finally, the final goal is professional development for staff around multi-tiered system supports, because not every staff member is gonna be, um, familiar with that model. And also under social emotional learning, students and professional development around that area will happen also in, during this plan. As a segue into, to number two, our first in-service date in January twenty-fourth, we're gonna have, uh, teacher professional development in the area of, one, we're gonna create a shared school vision around this plan as a staff, and then we're gonna have introduction to the multi-tiered system support system, the model, what it looks like and what it's gonna look like, possibly look like for us here at, um, Shasberry School next year. And it's kind of the introductory professional development into this whole plan for the staff.
Jeff, is, we're getting close to the end of the constraints of no child left behind, right, the end of that program? So is, is this just kind of a holding action at this point? I mean, I know you've had to through a lot of work and a lot of preparation, is it really designed to take us someplace higher?
I believe so.
Or is it just to?
No, I believe so.
Okay, so you think we'll see some, some definite gains from?
No, I, I. I do, I do, if we do this right and efficiently and effectively, I think we're gonna see some, some very positive results.
Okay.
I can add to that by just saying, in reading the plan and ta, um, talking with Jeff, keeping, keeping abreast of what's going on, that, uh, one of the things that is unique to their plan is in the goal setting, they have said that, um, they will also look at monitoring students' core needs in the enhancement area, not just interventions or remediation. So I think that answers a lot of, um, the interest of the community, the interest of parents over time in making sure that all students' needs are met. So I think that's unique to your program, and I commend you for it, and I think it, it builds into that whole, uh, area of the multi-tiered system of intervention and instruction, I'll say, um, whether it be enhancement or remediation, because they are looking, as Jeff said, to all of their resources and maybe, uh, leveraging them in different ways than they have been. So I, I think it's an integrated system, and, um, again, what's unique is they're looking at the needs of all children, not just the remedial or, or intervention needs needed.
Jeff, is this gonna be something that's rolled out throughout the rest of the year, or is it all gonna be happening on the twentieth?
No, no, the, oh, this spring will be a lot of, a lot of the prep work. What, the way the plan is designed is we, uh, we had to select, um, some indicators in the state, there's a list of indicators, we selected eleven indicators. We, we've created three goals, which are three goals I stated to you, which all fit somewhere into one of those indicators, and then there's tasks assigned to those, those goals and indicators. That is, has a date to it, has a specific what we need to do, when we need to do it, how we're gonna do it, and then we're gonna follow that plan, task by task. So it's, a lot of the prep work is this spring, in the summer, and then the fall of next year is when we really start implementing a lot of it.
Split year.
Yeah, yeah, split year.
Anything else? Okay, January in-service date?
That's, I, I, yes.
Is that it? All right, super done.
I'd just like to note, the next legislative breakfast is the twentieth at seven forty-five at the supervisor's union offices, and what I've been doing is asking directors, principals, and I'll ask you as board members if there's, uh, specific areas of alerts that you would like covered, or have the legislators be alert to, that you email me, or you can mention them here now. I am going to be sending an email to them, uh, before meeting on the twentieth, because of the fact that there's a large, uh, block of time from the last time we met with them, and as you know, they opened on Tuesday, so yesterday. So there's, uh, already from, uh, Shasberry, I have the state funding formula as one of the alerts.
What, what exactly about it?
Basically, the formula and how it, how it's funded, and the teacher's pension, um, from the, that's the second thing, Fran, you can speak to that.
Yeah, the teacher's pension, I, I forget the, I don't know if it's something like three billion dollars, there's a deficit on this thing or not, what are we gonna do different in the near future? I mean, you've already, it's already been promised to certain people, that, that, obviously, you can't sustain what we have, so how are we gonna do it? I mean, that, what do they have for plans in the future to, to change how we do this? I, and I don't know, I don't have the answer.
Or sustain it.
Or sustain it, yeah, so I mean, I'd just like to know what they've talked about, if anything. I've asked quite, probably just about every year for the last three years, so, Larry?
Catherine, your, your intent is to put us on the agenda first, so we.
Actually, it would be.
Lots of times we go into that meeting and it's a, it's a hour, two-hour-long lecture from, from the legislators to us.
Oh, I see.
It would be much better if we had an opportunity to.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Can I say, Catherine, and, and this doesn't necessarily reflect the opinion of anybody else on the board, but I, I get, I get concerned when I hear, um, you know, repeatedly, uh, how we're spending too much statewide on education, and we need to change the system. I, I think that, at, at least in R S U, we're not spending too much on education, and when you look at the, uh, you know, the spending per, per people, we're way, way below. The system works pretty well for the towns in our district right now financially, and, I mean, if you look at how much we have, how much money is spent on education here, and how much of it comes from within our own towns, it's a small, relatively small percentage.
Very small, yeah.
So cha, changing the system because, uh, districts and other parts of the state are, are gaming it a little bit, uh, is fine, but don't do it in such a way that we're punished down here, that's what we're.
Well, I think, I think that, um, the intent here, actually, many of you may have heard Rick Tenbrock say that he feels the formula itself, it's not about formula, it's how, how it's, um, how it's implemented at the legislature, and how they actually, uh, the process and procedures, uh, the sequen, the sequence of that, um, at the legislature, and at the state, uh, tax commissioner's office that actually starts the whole conversation, how that works, um, and is manipulated in the formulas. So, uh, actually, tomorrow, when you have your, uh, budget work session, he will go through a whole explanation with you of a different way in which we are now, uh, communicating our budget development to, uh, community members and to select board members. Really trying to show them that before you even begin, uh, out of the tax commissioner's office, the guidelines on the, uh, home-based tax rate have already been set, uh, in anticipation of the increases throughout the state. So before you even start your budget, there's already an increase to your tax rate, and now that the statewide C L A has been determined, they've actually increased that. So before you even start, I think for one of the other towns, well, a couple of the other, uh, districts, um, that increase, before they even start to put their own budget figures in, is already eight to ten cents on, on each tax rate, on the tax rate. So we're trying to start the conversation differently this year, to make sure people really understand the state formula and how it's impacted, exactly what you're saying, how it's impacted by external and internal, uh, forces, which would be your local, local effect. And he will actually, uh, be explaining that in detail tomorrow with you, and he has all kinds of charts and, uh, to take you through that sequence from the very first home's debt tax anticipated rate, to then what the C L A does, to then what it might look like if you were even level funded or, uh, less.
Initially, yeah, I think we started to look at that last month.
You did, okay.
Yeah, and I would just, you know, say again, that we've never had any committee passing our school budget here, and, um, and I think that's because the residents of Shasberry anyway, um, are okay with the system and.
Well, and they're supportive of your program and like, and your budgeting.
They're supportive of the schools, yeah, and, and we are pretty conservative when you compare our spending with the rest of the state.
That's true.
Will that meeting be televised tomorrow, the budget meeting?
I don't know, we can check to see if Cat TV has it on the schedule. It really, for Cat TV, I'll, I'll speak on their behalf, they have three channels, and if those three channels are booked up, um, they often don't have people to, uh, come out and do the, the recording. However, um, we have had volunteers come through, so let's check on that, because I think it would be useful, um, to have that televised.
We do have one meeting on the, on the schedule for tomorrow.
Do you know if it's this one?
Um.
It's six thirty tomorrow.
I don't recall the, the meeting.
Okay, let's check, I'll, I'll do that, um, in a moment.
Okay, at our last, last meeting, uh, we had a, Mike Foley come before the board, and he had a problem about the composting, and he doesn't do it anymore. I did call his place four different times, which I thought was his place. Uh, it was a Foley number, but it happened to be his parents' place. So Jen called me last night and said, "Well, he's waiting for me to get ahold of him," I said, "Wait a minute." I, I hoped I, so I did call the guy right after I got off the phone too, and, uh, he, he kinda just chuckled a little bit, he said, "Well, that's my parents' house, I bet they got about ninety different messages on their phone." So I felt better, because I promised him I'd get right back to him, and so I, I did that, and I told him I'd check on a couple other things, and then, uh, so that's, we're in good standing still.
So he's still waiting for a response from you?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm gonna, he's, he's got a response, but I'm gonna, he, he asked me a few other questions, which I didn't check on, so I'm gonna do that, and I will personally get back to him again, I've got the right number down, so we're all set. Okay, um, our first budget meeting will be tomorrow night at six thirty here in the library. Um, anybody that's running, I don't know, Pat, are you up for?
I'm up for election.
Re, reelection, I don't know.
I'm not running.
Oh, okay, you just, so my point is.
That's official.
Okay, my point is, anybody that is running for the board, the petitions have to be in by the twenty-seventh at town offices, just so you'll know. Okay.
Uh, January twenty-seventh.
January, yeah, this one, twenty-seventh, yeah?
Well, it's important for anyone to know.
Okay, uh, also, I'd like the, the board to, if we could get a letter together, Jeff, or anything for years of service for Mary Ann.
Yeah.
And I think we should, you know, at least present her with a letter and the board members sign it, because she has been here for quite a long fall, so thirty-two years is, it's pretty, pretty decent.
Fran, just a reminder, we do have for the S U wide, uh, retirement dinner in the spring, and, uh, Ann Mook has, Mook has been, um, very good about getting the legislature to make note of the years of, of service for the retirees.
Good.
It's a very nice dinner and certificate, so that will happen as well.
Okay, good, and the only other thing I, I had is I wanted to mention about open teacher negotiations, and maybe you can add a little bit to that.
If I can, sure.
If, if you've, I mean, I haven't talked to anybody, and I haven't heard anything, I know that they, the only thing I know that they haven't gotten their team together, so I don't know if you could add anything else to that, so, okay, so that's, that's about it. I don't want that to die here anytime soon. Uh, okay, and other than that, that's all I had. Uh, our next meeting is February twelfth for the school board meeting, you've got your budget status report, and that's it, unless somebody else, Larry?
We've got the S, the next S B S U, uh, budget meeting on the fourteenth.
Okay.
And, uh, we had another search committee meeting yesterday, uh, for the superintendent. We've narrowed the field down to two, uh, the next step will be, uh, an additional interview for those two candidates.
And when, when is that gonna happen? The next interview?
Uh, I'm waiting for, I think, within the week.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna happen fairly soon if possible.
I see.
If, if not within the week, then within the, the latter part of the month.
Okay.
So that's the plan.
Okay.
We have quite a, quite a range of folks that have to, uh, be accommodated, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, how many members of the committee? I think there are twelve or something.
Uh, I think I counted fourteen.
Fourteen.
I, I might have got a couple of them twice.
That's a lot, you talk about coordinating schedules throughout.
Um, Larry, just, can you just tell me the budget meeting, February, uh, the S U budget meeting is the fourteenth?
I believe it's at four thirty, because we had to set adjustment.
That's the fourteenth.
Yeah.
On a Friday? Friday?
No, it's Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, so.
January.
It'll be Tuesday?
Yeah, exactly, got it.
Or you, we can, yesterday. Tomorrow, we have a meeting, a one budget meeting.
Right, here, right here, in the library, so. Okay, anybody, anything else? The motion to adjourn.
So move?
Seconded. Done, thank you, all in favor, I abstain.
Yeah.